Hi everybody, thank you so much for being here today. My name's Jacqueline O'Money, I'm one of the Education and Training Officers from Under One Roof. I'm delighted that we're hosting this webinar today with Glasgow City Council. And yeah, it's been a while since we've done an event with Glasgow. We work very well together with the private sector team at Glasgow City Council. And we regularly answer a lot of inquiries from owners, landlords and housing professionals that work in the Glasgow City Council area. So hopefully today, we're going to have a really productive session talking all things tenement management and maintenance. I've got my colleague Rebecca here, Rebecca's our comms officer and she's doing all the technical aspects of today. So thank you so much Rebecca. Our format for today is going to be a PowerPoint presentation, everybody's favourite. I'm going to talk you through a lot of slides and give you lots of good information on tenement management and maintenance. And then once that's finished, we're going to come back into this live area and we'll have the Q and A section of our event. I'm also very happy to be joined by Heather Waterston, who's the Principal Officer in the Private Sector at Glasgow City Council today. Heather was drafted in last minute, so thank you so much for being here. And Heather will join us in the Q and A side of the event. So any questions that are very council specific that we can't answer, Heather will be here to help you today. So I think we're going to be here for the best part of an hour today. If you're, hopefully everybody is familiar with using Teams here. You'll see at the top or the side of your screen, depending on the device you've got, you've got a chat box and a Q and A box. If we can keep the chat literally to just any commentary that you've got as we go along. Rebecca will post links to different pages of our website and other useful links as we go through the presentation. And you can use the Q and A box at any point throughout the presentation and at the end of the session to ask any questions that you'd like us to go over at the end of the session. We're fully remote today, so there's no fire alarms or anything like that planned. So without further ado, let me get into things. Finally, just let me also let you know that we're recording today's session. You will get a copy of the recording sent to your inbox within the next kind of couple of days. So don't worry too much about frantically writing down absolutely everything that I'm saying. And the full recording will be sent to you along with this slide deck today. And I'd like to join up to our newsletter if you've not already done that. And a link for feedback on today's event to let us know how you found it. So get yourself comfy and let's get into the presentation. Let me share my screen and get going with this. Okidoki, so. You might be here today and you're thinking, I saw this online, thought it would be interesting. Who the heck are Under One Roof? I don't know anything about you guys. Or you might be really familiar with us. By either way, we are Scotland's only charity that provides free and partial information on repairs, maintenance and retrofit for tenement flat owner occupiers, landlords and housing professionals in Scotland. We're a small charity, we operate remotely and we're funded by the Scottish Government and 28 out of the 32 local authorities across Scotland for which we're extremely grateful. So when we talk about tenements at Under One Roof, we're not just talking about our traditional red and blonde sandstone buildings. We're talking about tenements per the Tenement Scotland Act 2004 definition, which is any property that's been split into two or more horizontally for residential accommodation is classed as being a tenement. So that means if you're here today as an owner or a landlord and you own a variety of properties within your portfolio and you're thinking, well, I've got flats that are not tenements Jacqueline. Well, if they are a cottage flat or a four on a block, however you term it, it's a converted villa. It's a modern development or a high-rise or low-rise multi-storey property, a flat above shops. Those things are all classes being tenements and we're here to help you with any management and maintenance issues that you have going on. We don't cover detached, semi-detached terrace or modern townhouse properties. But anything else that comes under the definition of being a tenement, then we are here to help you. So why is it important for you as an owner of a flat and a tenement building to maintain and look after your building? Remember when you bought your flat, you didn't just buy the four walls of your flat. You also bought a share of the common areas of the building that you're responsible for with the other co-owners in your building. So we want you to know what your responsibilities as an owner are. We want you to be aware of the condition of the building. We know depending on how long you've owned a property, if you're fairly new, a new owner, then your home report will have unlikely to have covered the real kind of intricacies of what is happening within the building itself. So as an owner, it's your responsibility along with the other co-owners in the building to be aware of the condition of the building and know what you need to do to maintain the building. Whether you have been an owner and a landlord for a short period of time or you're racking up the years or the decades, then you'll know about the pain points of constantly reacting to repairs and high unexpected bills. So we want to reduce that need of reactive repairs. And we want to kind of get out of the cycle of constantly being asked for money so that we can start to kind of save and plan for things and a bit more of, you know, a structured format rather than just on an ad hoc basis. It's somebody saying, I need £50 for that, a couple hundred for this, a thousand for that. We want to try and move away from that as much as we possibly can. We want you to have adequate buildings insurance. As we've seen in the news over the course of this year, we've had a number of incidents with buildings, two catastrophic ones with the building collapse in Glasgow in the south side. And also in Perth where we had a building fire that resulted in a fatality. Having appropriate buildings insurance that covers you for the full amount of your share of the reinstatement of the building and understanding and knowing that all of the co-owners in your building have also got the right type of insurance in place really is imperative in this current climate. We want you to have regular communication with owners. We know on a daily basis, the feedback that we get from professionals in the sector, landlords and owners and just other people who are connected to the overall housing sector. We know how difficult it is for owners to be in communication with each other. And that's way beyond what it means to have a busy life in 2025. We know that there are real issues with people engaging with each other and you know, understanding what their responsibilities are when it comes to maintaining and looking after a building and the importance of keeping in touch with people. So as an owner, you are responsible for a share of the common areas of the building. And we want you to know what your maintenance responsibilities are because a lot of people just don't understand. So you are responsible with the co-owners for things like repairs and replacements within the building, cleaning, painting, routine work, things like having your roof checked every year, your gutters cleaned, gardening, particularly if you've got a large common garden at the back of the building that you're all responsible for, then that has to be maintained. All the kind of day-to-day running aspects of the tenement, so that could, you know, be things like is the door entry system working, is the lights all working? You know, is there a crack in a window and stair, anything like that? You guys are responsible for the day-to-day running of the building and the reinstatement of parts, but not all of the building, as well as the installation of insulation. As more and more kind of people move towards energy efficiency and they're thinking of retrofit and you know, what they can do to make their buildings or their properties more energy efficient. Insulation seems to be, you know, one of the main areas that people will consider. Particularly if you own a flat on the top floor and you're thinking about insulating the loft. It is important that you understand who owns that loft space, per your title deeds, which we'll come on to talk about in a moment. But also that you understand that it's not just your sole responsibility as an individual to pay for a property for insulation, that is under tenement law, class has been a maintenance responsibility that all of the owners are responsible for. So you will get this slide deck, as I say, emailed over to you and it will just keep you right on what your responsibilities are when it comes to maintaining your building, if you're not already aware of that. So this brings me on nicely to talk about title deeds and deed of conditions. This document is super important. If you don't have a copy of your title deeds or you think, actually, I've misplaced them, I used to have them, I don't know where they are, then we would like you to have a copy to hand. You can go on to the Registers of Scotland website and you can pay a small fee, it's normally like £3.60 including VAT, to buy a copy of your title deed. And that will allow you to know which parts of the building are commonly owned with the other owners and what your responsibilities are as an owner for maintaining the common areas. They'll also classify what elements are an individual responsibility and perhaps a mutual repair responsibility. We'll come on to talk about that in a moment. And crucially, your title should also state how you allocate or split the cost of maintenance between owners, which is one of the most important things that you need to understand as an owner, what the share split of costs are. Particularly if you've got a mixed tenure building where you've got commercial properties on the ground floor and residential above. It's really important that you know what your share of the costs are and how that is actually made up. So there are three types of repairs that you will generally come across as a tenement owner in Scotland. There'll be individual repairs, which are repairs that you are responsible for yourself typically inside your property, including things like internal walls, doors, windows, resealing baths for showers, fixing leaky taps, that type of thing. Common repairs are repairs to parts of the building that all owners as a group are responsible for maintaining. And that includes things like the roof, external walls, foundations. Mutual repairs are slightly different to common. Mutual repairs are repairs to parts of the building that are shared between some owners, not all of them, whether that's within the same building or a neighbouring building. So your classic examples of that are where you've got a main door property in your building and they don't have access through the close door into the common stair area. It may be that it's only the owners who have access to the close that are responsible for maintaining it. It may be that the chimney on your roof actually is connected up to the neighbouring building as well. You'll have flues that go out, that vent out to one chimney. That means that you would be sharing the cost of chimney repairs, not only with the owners in your building, but the owners in the neighbouring building. It may also be things like drain pipes that could be, you know, that are exclusive for exclusive use for one side of the building and another, you know, set of pipes for the other side. It could be that you share drainage pipes with a neighbouring building. So it's really important that you have a copy of your title deeds, that you understand what it is that you own and what you're responsible for in common and in mutual perhaps with other owners in the building and neighbouring owners. Now, title deeds were written a really long time ago. It might be that if you've owned your property for four or five decades, you could go on to Registers of Scotland and find that your title deeds are on the old style Sacyne Register as opposed to being on the more modern Land Register. If that's the case, or it simply is that the wording of your title deeds are just, they either don't go far enough or they're silent on certain issues or they're just completely unworkable. That's where you would use the Tenement Scotland Act 2004. And that contains within it something called the Tenement Management Scheme, which is effectively a model set of deed of conditions that you would refer to as your default position if your titles are silent or unworkable. The Tenement Management Scheme talks about scheme property, which is parts of the property that, parts of the tenement property that every owner should maintain. So that's things like the ground on which the tenement is built, so the foundations and the solemn. So you might be here today thinking, well Jacqueline, my flat's on the top floor and you know, the owner on the ground or the basement's always going on about damp, but it doesn't affect my flat. It's down there, it's their problem, not mine. Well, actually, if your deeds are not specific on it and you refer to the Tenement Management Scheme, then you would have a common repair responsibility for the foundations and the solemn. Likewise, things like external walls, mutual gable walls, it could be shared within adjoining building. There's a responsibility there to maintain that scheme property. And the Tenement Management Scheme will also tell you how to come to agreements about maintenance. If your deeds are not specific on how to do that. Generally speaking, it may be that you need a simple majority of owners, so four out of six owners, five out of eight owners, whatever it may be. Unless your title deeds state otherwise, you'd be looking to secure a majority agreement to go ahead with work. And the Tenement Management Scheme confirms what is maintenance and how those costs are shared between owners. And it also specified that under, it changed under a previous common law about the roof. So the roof is now a shared responsibility. So the days of thinking it's only the top floor flats that are responsible for the roof are long gone. Unless your title deeds say otherwise, generally speaking, and per the 2004 Act, it is a common responsibility to maintain the roof. So if you're not sure what your title deeds say about the roof, about walls, about any of the kind of common parts of your building, have a look at your title deeds, buy them from Registers of Scotland if you don't have a copy. If your deeds don't go far enough or they don't reference a specific part of the building or you know, there's a difference in the wording with title deeds that belong to other flats within your building, then have a look at the Tenement Scotland Act and see what the Tenement Management Scheme says about that. Now, when it comes to organising common repairs in tenement buildings, we have got our 10-step proper procedure model that we advocate at Under One Roof. Of course, we know and we're under absolutely no illusion that it's not simply as easy as following these 10 steps. We know it's extremely complex, it's extremely stressful and it can take you on a kind of weird, wonderful and wild journey when you're organising common repairs in a building. But we advocate for following proper procedures so that if anything were to go wrong or if people were, you know, owners were upset about any part of the process and any further action was taken, that you can demonstrate that you have been able to follow proper procedures. So going through that, this 10-step model, we obviously want people to be able to identify the repair that's required. I guess it's not just enough to say something's happening on the roof or I think something's happening here. We want to try and, you know, be as specific as we possibly can as to what is that's going on. We then want to inform all of the owners in the building so that we can start to make decisions about how we progress with the repair and you know, kind of just have a chat with each other about where we're at, what we're thinking, you know, how we would like to handle a situation. Rebecca will post a link to our Inform Owners page on the chat, in the chat box just now. And that contains a customisable template letter that you can use. You can change it to suit the circumstances and it's, you know, it's a format that helps you to communicate with the other owners in the building to let them know what's going on. We then want you to find contractors, we'll talk about contractors further on in the presentation and about how to kind of handle that contractor process. We'd like you to get competitive quotes ideally, two or three quotes. Get final agreement from the owners on how to proceed. Get payment in advance, that might be a deposit or the full balance. You'll be signing a contract with the builder. Your work will commence, it'll be, you know, as you go through the process. You obviously want to make sure that the contractor has fulfilled the specification. If there's any problems, that they can be dealt with on site. And then once the work is completed, that you're paying for that per the terms of the contract. Now, as I say, I know it's a lot more complex than that. But we would like you to have in mind what the kind of 10 principles are of the proper procedures for organising common repairs, just so that you can try and protect yourselves as owners should any issues arise further down the line. Make sure that when you are, you know, in your quest to follow proper procedures, when you're informing owners about repairs that are required in the building, that you are arranging to meet with owners if need be. Sometimes if it's just, you know, you're circulating an email or a request for something, say, we had to change some lights because the stair lighting went out or there was, you know, it's your share of, you need to pay your share of the stair cleaning, whatever it may be. There are certain circumstances where you don't need to arrange a meeting. But where it's a kind of, it's a fairly large scale project, it's a significant piece of work, then in ideal circumstances, you would want to arrange a meeting. Your title deeds may be specific, particularly if you live in a modern building or you own a property in a modern building about meeting arrangements. And so have a look at your title deeds and make sure that you're fulfilling what your obligations are there. In any meeting that you do have, whether that's in person or it's online, that somebody's responsible for recording what happened in writing. So you've got a kind of agenda in place, somebody's taken the minutes of the meeting and noted the decisions that have been made and that circulated amongst a group of owners. Whether all of the owners attended or not, everybody should get a copy of the written minutes. Remember that an owner or owners can appeal against decisions that have been made about carrying out pieces of work if they can demonstrate that proper procedures have not been followed. So it is really important that you do follow proper procedures. Of course, it can be difficult, as we spoke about earlier, to contact or maintain contact with people who own properties in the building. And it might simply be that over time, you've just lost track of who the owners are as ownership has become a lot more fluid. So where you're having difficulty trying to find out who owns properties and you're maybe not getting much luck from the person who's living in the property itself, then there are places that you can go to get some assistance. So if you know that a property is rented out and you can get a hold of who the landlord is or you think you know who the landlord is, but you're not 100% sure, then you can go on to the Scottish Landlord Registration website and that will give you a list of who the owner is and their contact details. It may be a letting agent, but it's worthwhile having a look at the Landlord Registration website so that you can see who the owner is for a rented property and you've got an avenue to communicate with them. If for whatever reason you can't find the property on the Landlord Registration website, then you can speak to the Landlord Registration Team at Glasgow City Council to get some assistance with that. It may be that you're just thinking, well, look Jacqueline, you know, I know that somebody passed away or you know, there's maybe been some kind of breakup or breakdown or something like that and I've got, I've lost track of who a specific owner is for a property in the building. Well, you can buy the title deeds, particularly if you know that it's changed hands recently, then you can go on to Registers of Scotland, you can pay that £3.60 for a copy of the title deed and that'll give you a note of who the legal owner or owners are. And it'll also give you their address at the time of purchase, which you can then use to kind of, to try and make contact with them. And maybe that you're here today and you're thinking, well, I know that this property has been emptying our building for years. And we've got no idea who owns it, somebody passed away or you know, somebody's just abandoned it, we've got no clue as to who is responsible for it. Then get in touch with the council and see if they can help you with the, it's classed as being an empty home. If they can, if the Empty Homes Officer can help you with that. Otherwise, if you know, you think, well, it's been empty for a significant period of time. I had somebody contact me a few weeks ago who owned a property out with the Glasgow City Council area, but not a million miles away, trying to organise a common repair in the building. And they had an empty flat in there that had been empty for more than 20 years. So the Scottish Empty Homes Partnership exists to help people in whatever stage they're at with trying to trace an owner of an empty home. So if you're really struggling to find somebody and you think, I've knocked on the door, I've left a note, I've asked the other owners, I've had a look online or checked the Landlord Register. If you know, you thought it was previously rented out before, whatever the circumstances are, then speak to the council and speak to the Empty Homes Partnership and see if you can get some assistance. Another important point to note when it comes to following proper procedures for organising common repairs is around voting. It's really helpful just to kind of clarify that each property, so each flat is entitled to one vote when you are voting on repair work that's required. And that includes jointly owned flats, so it'll be one of the owners that will make the, you know, will take that vote on behalf of the other owners and their property. So whether you are engaged with all of the owners that are in the building or there's only maybe like a handful of you that kind of get together on a regular basis or seem to be, you know, interested in the common repairs process, every single flat. So if you've got eight flats in your building, then every flat is entitled to a vote. Unless the title deeds say otherwise, it's a majority decision that's required to progress with maintenance plans and that's binding on all owners. So if you've got five out of eight owners agreeing to go ahead with a piece of work or seven out of eight owners agreeing to go ahead with a piece of work, that's binding on the owners who either haven't voted or voted against that. A tied decision isn't a majority decision. So if you do find yourself in a situation where it is a tie, then we'll have to go back to the drawing board and have a think about how we can, you know, try to move things forward to get that majority in place. But make sure you know what your title deeds state. And if it is a majority decision, make sure that you are following proper procedures by offering a vote to every, for every property that's in your building and not just to select few who tend to be involved in common repairs on a regular basis. Now, we spoke about improper procedures, about contractors and appointing contractors. We know that in this post-Brexit, post-COVID cost of living crisis, it is a lot more difficult, even in the major cities like Glasgow and Edinburgh, to source reliable contractors. So have a look at things like the Council's Trusted Trader Scheme to see what contractors are on there. Have a look at trading standards, things like Trustmark, Buy With Confidence. Have a look on social media reviews, maybe try and speak to people if you can. And also check, you know, if it's dependent on the contractor that you're using, if they are, you know, if they're registered with a professional body, that their registration is up to date. Do your due diligence when it comes to sourcing a contractor and that you are confident that who, you know, you've asked to quote for the work or who you're appointing is trustworthy and reliable and that you've got the references or reviews there to prove it. Make sure that, as I say, in the due diligence process, that you're checking with the contractor, have they got public liability insurance in place with professional indemnity cover? Have they got a health and safety policy, particularly if they're working at height? What experience have they got in the work or the area that you want to have done? You know, are they specialists? Can they give you photographic evidence? Put you in touch with former clients that they've worked with? Just so you can get an idea of their suitability for, you know, for carrying out the work. And have they got a guarantee process or warranty insurance? What are they offering you once that work is finished? Is it a 12-month workmanship guarantee? Is it a specific warranty? Particularly if they've used certain materials or products? You know, what is that? You need to understand that as an owner, when you're appointing a contractor specifically for a larger piece of work, that you're confident that you have carried out all of the checks. What about the tender process? You know, it's always better to try and get a couple of quotes if you can. Make sure that the work is clearly stated in the specification, that you've got a couple of prices, by a specific closing date that you set. Don't always base your selection on price. If somebody's coming at 70 grand for a piece of work and somebody else is coming, you know, at like 15, don't be afraid to question why that is and to compare things side by side so that you understand what is and isn't included. And make sure that you know whose project managing work, particularly if Um and make sure that you know whose project managing work, particularly if it's a large, um if it's a large project like a you know, a roof repair or replacement and you're not working with a professional. Um if you're signing that contract yourself, um then that's a that's a big risk to take on board. So make sure that you understand how the project is gon- is going to be managed, who's going to be responsible for setting the start date, for giving you progress reports. Have you got contingency costs built in and is it a completion date? Um all things to kind of think about um when you're dealing with contractors and you're trying to appoint a contractor to carry out um a significant piece of work in your building. Um make sure that you're doing the due diligence and you're not just relying on using somebody because we've always used them or such and such said that, you know, a family member used this person and they were okay or we know somebody who can kind of do that. Can they really do it? Um and are you, you know, are you confident in their ability to be able to do the job with their um experience and specialisms? Um and have the, you know, got all the kind of the right documentation in place so that if, God forbid, something were to go wrong, and then you've got some form of recourse. Now, we know that when we're dealing with um common repairs, that sometimes we can do absolutely everything right. We can follow all our proper procedures, you know, we can um ask everybody to be involved in the decision making process. Um and sometimes it just doesn't work out. And there's lots of different reasons um why that happens. But it's important that you know as an owner and as a landlord here today that if you are facing a difficult situation with a common repair, particularly if it's affecting um the inside of your own property and your ability to be able to um keep renting that property out, then you need to know what your enforcement options are. Um so let's have a run through some of the kind of um the top enforcement um options that you've got available to you. Um you've got something called the duty to maintain. So the duty to maintain is a powerful legal protection in place for parts of a building that provide support and shelter. So your obvious one is the is the roof, okay? Um so if you have got, um say you're here as the owner of a top floor flat today, you've got water ingress from the roof every time it rains. Um your tenant has got uh, you know, an indoor water feature, they're really um upset about um living in the property. And you're absolutely desperate to to get the roof fixed, but you're just not getting um engagement from the owners, nobody really seems to be interested at all, or you you know, it's just piecemeal the the communication that you're getting back, then you would want to consider invoking the duty to maintain. Um Rebecca will put a link in the chat box to our page on the duty to maintain, which again contains a customisable customisable template letter that you can send out to the owners, reminding them of their responsibilities and the duty to maintain and that you can invoke that legally um should they not um or continue to not engage with you um to move forward with repairs. It may be that you want to go ahead with a repair and you feel it's an emergency situation. Make sure that your repair meets the definition of what an emergency actually is. Um and Rebecca will post a link to our page on emergency repairs so that you can check that what's going on meets that definition. And that um should you be challenged by owners on an illegal setting further down the line, um as to why you acted um the way that you did with a certain repair, um that you can um, you know, that you're confident that that repair is a genuine emergency or was a genuine emergency and you needed to take emergency action. The notice of potential liability um is also something to consider, particularly um if it's been a while since all the owners got together to agree to a piece of work and you got a majority agreement in place. Um for whatever reason, it may be that you're struggling to find a contractor, it may be that you have sourced and appointed a contractor, but they've got a long lead in time to do that particular piece of work um due to their current schedule. Um and during that time, you might hear, you know, us, somebody's thinking about selling their property. Um or, you know, I'm just not sure if um without having their agreement and the majority, um will it be really difficult for us to try and get funds out of that person? Then the notice of potential liability um is something to consider. It's a notice that you um you complete a form and you you lodge it with registers of Scotland, you may need a solicitor to do it. So it is worthwhile speaking to registers of Scotland. Um but that notice of potential liability will set as a burden on the title deeds. Um so that if the property is sold, um or anything happens where a solicitor is involved, um and they see um that the notice of potential liability is there, it just protects your majority um agreement to go ahead with work. Um so that funds can be um ring fenced in the event of a sale and that they're paid over to meet the owner's um liability for their um share of the repair. It may be that you need to get help from the council, um particularly if it's an ongoing leak. Um or, you know, it's several times a year or whenever it rains, something, whatever it is, if it's just ongoing, you might want to speak to um environmental health to see um what assistance they could offer. Um could they put a work notice um on the um on the building compelling the owners to go ahead with a piece of work? Um it might be that, you know, you're struggling, you've got your agreement in place. Um but you're struggling to get one or two owners to pay um their share. Um you might want to speak to the council to see if you would qualify for their missing share scheme where they will pay um a share or shares that are missing um for for a piece, a specific piece of work to go ahead. Um and they will then recoup that from the owner over time, including interest. Um once the work is completed. So that's something to, that's something to consider. If you've not, um you know, if you're not sure what to do and you feel you're really within touch and distance of a repair um going ahead, but you've just got one or two shares that are missing, um consider what help the council can offer you. Um if the property is a um i- is a rental property, um and the owner's not engaging with you, then they've got obligations as landlords that are here today will be aware under the repairing standard, particularly as that was updated last year. Um and there are areas of that concerning common repairs now. Um it's a lot more specific on common repair responsibilities within the repairing standard. So you can speak to the council as well to see if there's any assistance that they can give you. Other times, it might be that you've exhausted absolutely everything that you can possibly do. And you know, you're thinking, Jacqueline, that's all very well, you're saying all of this, but we are, you know, really in a very desperate situation here. Um and we need to get this person or persons to pay their share on of the work that's gone ahead. Maybe it could be that uh another owner or owners have covered somebody's share. Or, you know, you're looking to invoke the duty to maintain, um because it's it's a critical piece of work. Then if it's something that's up to the value of five thousand pounds, then you can use a simple procedure claims action at the Sheriff Court. Rebecca will post a link to our page that we've got um on the simple procedure um on our website. Um we've got a whole section of information on that that talks you through what the simple procedure is, how to make an application, how to um defend a claim if it's been made against you. Um lots of helpful and useful information on the simple procedure. It replaced the functions of the small claims court, that's why it's only up to the value of five thousand pounds. It's a D I Y process, you you don't need a solicitor. Um then you pay a fee, um it's a small fee, but it's up to the value of three hundred pounds and then it's a set fee for anything between three hundred up to five thousand pounds. So have a look at that. If you, you know, are in the situation where you've paid money on somebody's behalf um for a piece of work to go ahead, um or, you know, you're like, we need somebody to make a dis- like to make a decision here, um forcing these people to engage with us and to pay their share of a certain piece of work or ongoing piece of work. Then the simple procedure is the avenue that you would follow. If it's something over the value of five thousand pounds, if it's a significant piece of work, then it's the ordinary cause action that you would use at the Sheriff Court. That's not a D I Y process and you will need us to engage a solicitor to do that on your behalf. So legal action is, you know, it does exist, it is there. Nobody relishes having to take legal action against a person or people, um particularly in these types of situations. But where you have done everything that you possibly can, you've followed all the proper procedures. Um you know, you've done all of your due diligence. Um you have, you know, done everything that you possibly can to communicate and engage with an owner or owners about what needs to happen and why. Um if you're simply getting nowhere at all, then you have to consider um the realistic possibility of taking legal action. Now, owners' associations um are something that if you've not already heard of an owners' association or you don't have one in your building, um then it's a good time to think about, are you in a position with the other owners to be able to form an association? Particularly pertinent because the Scottish government are currently considering proposals from the Scottish Law Commission, including a draft bill proposal for making it a legal requirement, a li- a mandatory requirement for all tenement buildings to have an owners' association in place in Scotland. Um that is likely to um, you know, to um to come into being um next year. Um we're not sure of the dates at the moment. Um as I say, it's still under consideration. Um but consider where you are at with the um level of relations um with other owners in your building. And are you at the point where you could consider um forming an association? Or, you know, you think, well, actually, we're pretty much there at the moment, we've just not really called it an owners' association. Um now is the time to think about that. As I say, currently right now, it's not defined by legislation, it's not recognised as a corporate body, you know, you're not registering it with Companies House. Um but it is a formal arrangement between owners of the building. Um you should have a constitution for your owners' association and then an agreed set of rules and procedures. Rebecca will post a link to our page on owners' associations, which talks you through in a bit more detail about everything to do with um, you know, what they are, how they can help, how you can form one. And we've also got a template constitution that you can modify to suit the circumstances. But it's important that your owners' association has a set of rules that sets out what the purpose of the association is. Um how subscriptions are paid, who the office bearers are and the structure of meetings and the frequency of meetings. How often will you get together? Will it be, you know, every um quarter? Will it be once a month? Um you you know, will it be twice a year? What will it be? And who will be the office bearers? Who'll be the chairperson for the association? Who's willing to be a secretary um or a treasurer? And, you know, how will it help you to be able to um communicate as owners? Um we've seen that owners' associations um can help owners to make um faster and quicker and faster and better decisions. Um it can give leadership to the repairs process, encourages everybody to um to participate in the repairs process. You might be here today and you're thinking, well, this is good, Jacqueline, because I am sick of it always being me. Sometimes it ends up being a full-time job that I'm just, you know, trying to organise repairs and I'm coming up against like such, you know, um difficult situations with people and we're literally talking about, you know, repairing a lock or um changing a light bulb much, you know, let's not even get started on annual gutter cleaning or, you know, checking the roof, wha- whatever it may be. Um you know, there's kind of constant conflict there. Owners' associations can can help people to communicate better, make better decisions, um and, you know, it provides you with that single source of contact. Um who, you know, who is it? The the chairperson or the secretary, who's going to be responsible for for being in touch with all of the owners? Kind of collating ev- you know, everything into one voice, as it were. Um and how, you know, it helps you with how you're paying for repairs as well. You can um decide, you know, how much people are going to pay on a regular basis into um into a bank account for the association. Um so have a think about it wherever you are um in the kind of um on the journey as being um a co-owner in a tenement building. Um this is going to be a mandatory legal requirement, um hopefully within the next year. Um so if you can get ahead of it now and you can form your association and get things um, you know, moving now, then it will help you. Um so that you're not um again reacting to something, oh, this is a legal requirement, we've got to do this, what do we do? And you're scrambling around at the last minute. Have a think about doing that now. Property factors, um in the west of Scotland, um almost all buildings have got property factors. If you don't have a property factor, um then sometimes you just kind of need that realisation and the penny to drop that you're in a self factoring building. And that as owners, you're all responsible um for um, you know, for managing the building. Um you've not got the luxury of a factor who can do that on your behalf. Factors are employed by owners to manage the common parts of the building. Um and they are governed by the Property Factors Act two thousand and eleven. Factors all have to be on the public register of factors that's run by the government. Um they've got to meet the entry requirements, including a fit and proper person test. So always make sure if you're looking to potentially hire a property factor um or, you know, you're just not sure um about the the details of your current factor, have a look on the register um and make sure that they're on there and that you um, you know, you've got the right information um that you need to have on them. Um that you understand that factors um have got to comply with the code of conduct. And that was introduced in two thousand and eleven. Um and also that you know that it's the first tier tribunal at the Housing and Property Chamber. That's the entry point to the legal system in Scotland for any issues between owners and property factors. It used to be the homeowners' housing panel. Um but that doesn't exist anymore. Um and it all comes under the first tier tribunal. So if you're here today as an owner and you've got a factor for your building, whatever stage you're at in the in the relationship with your factor, whether it's good, bad or ugly, um that you know that they're on the property factor register. Um you know how to resolve issues um through the first tier tribunal. Um if you cannot resolve it um through a complaints process and that you understand um what's included in the code of conduct and how your factor is supposed to act. The code of conduct is quite clear that all factors have got to provide a written statement of service agreement to every owner that they work with. And that essentially is the contract between um owners and the factor and it sets out um what the owner can expect from the factor and what the factor expects from the owners. And the code itself also covers things like communication, um debt recovery, insurance, repairs and maintenance and complaints. Um but make sure as an as you're here today as an owner or a landlord on of a flat in a tenement building with a factor, that you have a copy of the written statement of service agreement, that you've read it. Um and that you know um about the code of conduct and you've downloaded a copy of that. Again, Rebecca will put everything in the chat box. So I'm conscious that I'm going on for time here and we've not got a huge amount um left for the Q and A, but we will get to everybody's questions. So let me just um kind of um wrap this all up and talking about getting started. Wherever you are in this um journey um for common repairs, make sure you've got a list of all of the owners in your building, um you've got their contact details and you circulate that to all of the owners. And you can ask them about um what their building insurance arrangements are as well. And if you don't have a common or a block policy that perhaps your factor organises, um or somebody in the building is responsible for that, um make sure that you've got a copy of everybody's um individual building insurance and policy so that you know that there's adequate cover in place. If you've owned your property for five or more years and all of the owners are in the same situation and it's been a while since you've had a reinstatement valuation survey, particularly if you don't have a factor, then consider employing um a building surveyor to come and do a reinstatement valuation survey so that your um insurance um cover is for an adequate amount. Um should anything happen in the building that's catastrophic and you need to reinstate part or or all of it. Likewise, if it's been a while since you've had a um a professional building survey carried out, then please do think about that. We would recommend it every five years. Um so it's a good time to speak to the other owners and get an idea of whether people are happy for that to go ahead or not. And that will give you a report um and help you to sort out a planned maintenance schedule for your building. Make sure that you're also, you know, when you're around there, if you're um doing a property inspection, if you're renting or you're here as an owner today, um that you know what's happening in the common areas, that you know the state of the main door, how you, the entry system, how is the downpipes looking? Are there any cracks in windows? Does the stair lighting all work? Um you know, what uh is what's the condition of the walls and the clothes, the floors, stair railings, et cetera. Um make sure that you've got something in your planned maintenance for cleaning gutters out every year and having your roof checked. That you've got your maintenance schedule for not only things like gutters in the roof, but you you know, your stair cleaning, your gardening. And that you're cons- you know, you could, that you're having discussions or you've got something in place for how you're actually paying for repairs. Um and you're building, have you got a maintenance account or does one person just have it all in their personal account? Um have you thought about how you start to save for future repairs? Um it's worth having that conversation. If your building's factored, then work closely with your factor. If your building's factored, then work closely with your factor, make sure that they're carrying out site visits, that you're having regular meetings. And if you don't have a factor, um and you're organising common repairs. Have a look at the NovaVille Shared Repairs app and see how that could potentially help you manage the situation. So how can we help you under one roof? Well, we have got hundreds of informative articles on our website. The website is born from our founders, John Gilbert and Annie Flint, um their original tenement handbook that they wrote in the nineties. Um, it's been updated significantly onto the website and we have got lots of um articles on there and everything to do with tenement management, maintenance and retrofit. Um, it's right down to, you know, having difficult conversations with people. Um, on to um, you know, technical aspects of repairs, there's lots of intricate architect drawings there as well. Um, so anything that you need help with, um it will be on our website. We've also got the inquiry service, the Ask an Expert um service. So when you go onto the website, you can click on the button at the top and it'll um bring up another box for you to put in your personal details. The details of your inquiry and it'll come to myself or my colleague Stephen. We'll have a look at it and get back to you um within a few days. Um, with an answer. Um, we generally um tend to answer forty, fifty plus inquiries um a month from people in the Glasgow City Council area. Um, so please do get in contact with us. Um, as I say, the slide deck will be emailed out to you today along with the um recording um of our session today. Um, we'll move over into the Q and A. Um, my email address is on screen. Um, so please, if there's anything that comes up that we don't get a chance to discuss today or just simply hasn't come to mind. Um, then do contact me directly, um and I'm more than happy to um to help you. Hi, Rebecca. Hi, Heather.
Hi, Jacqueline. There, um, we've got a couple of good questions in the Q and A books. Um, our first one is from Chris, it says, is the tender process different? So when you were talking about contractors and and how to is the tender process different for large-scale voluntary repairs where grant assistance is provided by Glasgow City Council? Does this go out on a public tender, given that council funds are involved? I don't know, Heather, you might want to weigh on this and on this one.
We wouldn't do the tender. If someone wanted to do a voluntary repair scheme, we would need to be satisfied that they had got the appropriate surveys and engineers' reports and that all owners were willing to pay their share and had it logged in their their account, joint account beforehand. Um, how they go for for a tender, obviously they're looking for best price for the work that they're getting, so it would always be in in their best interest to go to more than one contractor. Um, especially if there's maybe stonework and roofwork in different trades required. Um, there might be that they need to subcontract, so they're looking, really, they should employ someone like an agent who can do all that for them to make sure that they get absolute best value for money.
Absolutely, yeah. I think if um for Chris as well, it's just worth saying that if you've got a factor for your building. Um, then they will normally um organise that on behalf of the owners. But if it's a self-factored building, then definitely have a look at the pages that we've got on building contracts. Um, finding builders. Um, and just kind of ta- we take you through that process as to, you know, what you should be um what you should be doing, the proper procedures that you should be following. Um, to make sure that you um are employing somebody who's got the the right capabilities um and experience for and specialisms for for the work that you need. Um, but yeah, as Heather says, the um that the council won't won't get involved um and taking that to tender as a as the owner's responsibility.
Great, thank you both. Um, we've got a question from Anne. Um, she asks, what can we do when the only way to make our individual property watertight is to have work carried out on another owner's property? We have a landlord who owns the upper cottage flat and we own the lower we have extensive water ingress due to cracks and bossed external rough cast. The upper owner refuses to engage in the process of re-rough casting the building. What is the legal situation um with us having the rough cast removed and replaced on his property to stop water ingress into our property?
Okay, so, um, Anne. You've got my sympathies, that's a really difficult situation. Um, under the Tenements Act, the the owner um is is obliged to give access to um the property. Um, where work like that is 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 required um to to be able to stop um water ingress. Um, so it may be that you have to consider um legal action to um to to invoke that. But there there is um, there is a duty um to to give access in that situation. Um, ha- also, you know, duty to maintain. Um, it's part of the building that provides support and shelter. Um, so again, you would look at um using the template letter that we've got on our duty to maintain page and sending that to the owner. Um, and if there's still no engagement from there, then consider legal action to invoke the duty to maintain. Um, so that a sheriff is obviously making a de- a a a decision um that requires that owner to engage in the process. Um, and, you know, get that work carried out. Um, because that is, that's, that's very, very, very difficult um in that situation. But the, it's also worth speaking to um to the um the landlord registration team at the council as well. Um, so I'm just thinking about things like as landlord obligations, um repairing standard obligations. Um, they have got a duty to engage with you um on that basis as well as a landlord. You're deemed to be a fit and proper person per your landlord registration. Um, so absolutely, um get in touch with the council, consider the duty to maintain. Um, Heather, I don't know if there's anything else that you would want to add about how the private sector um team could assist Anne here.
Is it, um, if it's just between yourself and the the guy above. Um, we can write to him and remind him of his duty to maintain as a landlord. I would assume if the water is coming down to you, it's also going into his tenant. Um, so we can inspect, if his tenant complains to us, we can inspect the property and raise it that way with them also. Um, if it's a case that everyone within the block needs to be repaired, then then that gives us more power. At push, you could go ahead and split the cost between us all and then claim it back from them. But again, that that involves legal action and it's long. Um, but we can always email him. Um, if he has more than one property, we can go with the threat of we will inspect your other buildings. Because obviously if he's poor landlord in one, chances are he's a poor landlord in another property as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So Anne, I hope that helps you um as just to know that there is support available from the council and from ourselves um throughout this process um and get you to a situation where your property is um is wind and watertight.
You're on mute, Rebecca.
You're on, you're on mute.
Sorry, thank you. And that is very helpful. And we've got one more question from Antoinette, which is, how can I get information on maintenance repairs for gutters for my factors? So things like the annual cleaning, how can you get information about that?
Yeah, absolutely. So Antoinette, you're, um first of all, I would direct you to have a look at your factor's written statement of service agreement, which is obviously the contract between the factor and yourself. Um, that will have a section on repairs and maintenance, um which will specify um what their procedures are for carrying out repair and maintenance work um to a building. Um, and if that doesn't kind of drill down into the specifics for your development. Um, then you can speak to your property manager um and ask them for the um to provide you with that information. And they should be able to email that over to you and let you know what the schedule of um maintenance work is um for your building so that you know what they are um doing on your behalf um on, you know, a a biannual or annual basis. Um, and if, you know, it's not specific um to things like um gutter cleaning and you are concerned about it. Um, then you can ask them to um, you know, to make contact with the other owners um and to make arrangements for the gutters to, the gutters to be cleaned out. Um, if you find that you've done all of that and you're simply not getting an answer from the factor and you don't know, um you you know, you just don't know where things are at. Um, then if the other owners are in the same position and they don't know either, um then I would um urge you to consider making a formal written complaint to the factor using their complaints procedure, which will be available on their website. Um, and that would obviously be a last resort. Um, I would hope that the property manager and would be able to give you that information. Um, and, you know, that the written statement of service agreement would also cover that.
Great, thank you. I'm just having a little scan of the Q and A and chat. Um. Anne's put a wee follow-up question um about her neighbour, would she contact a landlord registration with help with that?
I just went back to her and said, we have a contact us page on the council website under private sector housing. So if she puts her details and everything in there, somebody will pick it up and send it on to the relevant team.
Brilliant, thank you. Um, there are no further questions in either of the boxes.
Great, okay. Um, all right. Well, listen, thank you so much, everybody, for being here today. Um, we are actually doing an in-person session tomorrow with Glasgow City Council. Um, at the um City Hall's, the old fruit market on Candle Rigs, ten till twelve tomorrow. Um, we will be covering the same session, but we're also, um we've got um a representative from the council giving a presentation on their full scheme of assistance. Um, and myself and an architect colleague are also talking about damp and mould. Um, so if you are available tomorrow and you are interested um in coming along. Um, then Rebecca has put a um a note on the chat box with the the link to that. Um, and her email address. Um, if you want to come along, then please let us know and we'd be very happy to see you in person tomorrow. But I think all that um remains for today um is to um say thank you to to Heather and Rebecca for being here, I really appreciate it. Um, I hope everybody um found that informative today. I know it's a lot of information to um to take in. But I really appreciate you taking the time out of your busy day and your lunch hour um to spend it with us. Um, and we'll look forward to um hearing from you and hopefully seeing you tomorrow. But thank you so much for your time, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Lovely. Thanks very much, Jacqueline. Hi.
Hey ladies, thank you very much. I'll speak to you later.
Thanks.